I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. We have roll call, Michael Ann, please.
Mayor Segada.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Mr. Jacomo.
Present.
Mr. Chatterley.
Present.
Thank you. Do you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Key and justice for all.
Thank you. Note that we have no visitors here tonight. Other announcements, all city officers will be closed on Friday, December 25th, in observance of Christmas, Christmas Day, and on Friday, January 1st, in observance of New Year's Day. Our next regular scheduled commission meeting will be Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. Since we have no one here, there is no items from citizens present, so we'll move into the action items. Six A, couple of November 24th, 2020, regular commission meeting minutes. Did you all have them? Thanks to go over them.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 24th, 2020, regular commission meeting minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 24th.
Is there any further discussion? Anyone opposed? Vote by the sign of eye. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, deliberate enact on resolution 2020-67, thanks and appreciation to Glenn Deckett and Beverly Krievokapich Living Trust for real estate donation to the city of Raton. I'm just gonna make a statement real quick. These two resolutions, we are going to go ahead and read them, and at the end of that, we'll take a motion to approve, okay? So, resolution number 2020-67, City of Raton, New Mexico, resolution of thanks and appreciation. Whereas the city of Raton has accepted a donation of real estate from the Glenn Deckett and Beverly Krievokapich Living Trust, and whereas the donated real estate consists of a portion of Block Two of Fairview, a district of the city of Raton, Colfax County, New Mexico, and whereas the Krievokapich family is recognized for numerous contributions to Raton's rich history and community development in Raton, particularly in the field of education, and whereas Glenn Deckett and Beverly Krievokapich have kindly supported numerous community benefit activities and programs through philanthropic assistance, and whereas the Deckett and Krievokapich donation is timely and important to Raton's efforts at revitalization and is anticipated to have a significant positive impact on community economic development, and whereas the real estate location is an undeveloped site that is important to Raton's redevelopment plans, has considerable potential for positive community improvement, and has key access from Tyler Drive, now therefore be it resolved that the Raton City Commission on behalf of the citizens of Raton, New Mexico, has hereby expressed thanks and appreciation to Glenn Deckett and Beverly Krievokapich for the generous contribution to the benefit of the community of Raton, passed, approved, and adopted this eighth day of December 2020. I'd like to thank everyone involved in getting that done. We entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
I'll second.
We got a motion in three seconds.
I think you got three seconds.
Yes, we did. All right, is there any further discussion or any comments? Anyone opposed? Vote by the sign of eye. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Resolution number 2020-68, City of Raton, New Mexico, resolution of appreciation and recognition. Whereas New Mexico Main Street nominated Raton Main Street Executive Director Brenda Ferry for the Main Street America Mary Means Leadership Award earlier this year for her outstanding dedication to downtown revitalization, and whereas New Mexico Main Street has recognized Brenda's ability to build partnerships and collaborate with community and district stakeholders as well as her energy and enthusiasm for the support and work, and whereas, under Brenda's leadership, Raton Main Street has successfully collaborated on the Heritage Park Multimodal Project, facade improvements, upgrades to the historic Shuna Theater, the reopening of the historic El Raton Theater, and the securing of funding for New Mexico's first-rate blocks project to construct streetscape improvements along historic First Street, and whereas Brenda has led and directed efforts to establish a local metropolitan redevelopment area, update the downtown master plan, establish and build the annual Gate City Music Festival, and numerous other civic activities, programs, and initiatives, and whereas Brenda's hard work, innovation, and dedication has resulted in a strong and effective partnership between Raton Main Street, New Mexico, Main Street and the city of Raton, and whereas Brenda has continued her strong contributions in 2020 by the economic sustainability efforts with successful programs like the CARES Act Small Business Grant Program, Dilapidated Building cleanup Program, the mural project, and the Raton Cash Model that have served as a model for Main Street districts to follow, now therefore be it resolved that the Raton City Commission on behalf of the citizens of Raton, New Mexico, has hereby expressed appreciation and recognition to Brenda Ferry for her hard work, effective leadership, and successful contributions to the revitalization of the downtown Raton district, passed, approved, and adopted this eighth day of December 2028. I want to thank Brenda for all of her hard work and Main Street for what they do for this community. This time I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020-68.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2020-68. Is there any further discussion or comments? All those opposed? Vote by the sign of eye. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Item D, public hearing, deliberate enact on ordinance number 1010 relating to collective bargaining for the city of Raton, New Mexico, providing rights, responsibilities, and conditions of continued existence and transfer of authority upon termination of local board. Mr. Barry?
Mayor Commissioner, you recall a couple of meetings ago, we had introduced this ordinance, number 1010, and at that time, we talked about its relationship to legislation that was passed in the 2020 regular session of the New Mexico Legislature. That was last February. There was a bill introduced that basically would transfer a lot of the rights and responsibilities of a local board to the state board in Santa Fe. Raton is one of the unique communities that has had a personnel board for decades, for many years, and we've had collective bargaining agreements in place for decades as well. We actually have four collective bargaining agreements in place currently, and we have collectively bargained with employees, one of the few New Mexico municipalities that has done that since back in the 60s or 70s. The Labor Management Board, however, is something that was adopted as a result of a settlement agreement between the city of Raton and IAFF some years ago, and the city commission here did adopt a section of our ordinance, personnel ordinance, that created that personnel labor board, and now, under this legislation, we would repeal that section of our ordinance and replace it with the model ordinance that you have in here. Now, we don't have a law to say so in the terms of the ordinance. This really was the result of negotiation between representative of local governments and the state personnel board and their staff, and so this language was really strictly provided to us, and in order for us to maintain our person, our labor management board, we would need to adopt this prior to the end of the calendar year 2020, so we have it up for your consideration here tonight. If you do vote in favor of adoption of the ordinance, then I will submit this to the state board for their approval, and we have a little bit of a process there, but we would meet that requirement of adoption before the end of the year. So I will answer any questions, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barry. Any questions for Mr. Barry?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1010, collective bargaining for the city of Raton, New Mexico.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1010 relating to collective bargaining for the city of Raton, New Mexico, providing rights, responsibilities, and conditions of continued existence and transfer of authority upon termination of local board. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, I believe we need to do a roll call on this one.
Yes. Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, thank you. Item E, deliberate enact on capital outlay funding priorities for 2021 legislative session. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, just let me start out by discussing what you have in your package here. I have provided a memorandum discussing, well, it contains my recommendations for capital outlay that the city of Raton would submit to the legislature during their regular session that would start in January of 2021. This is a 60-day session. I would state right now that we have until February 11th to submit our capital outlay requests, and giving you some guidance in the packet about what we're really looking at, you have a guidance there called the criteria for legislature to evaluate local projects, and it lays out a need-based criteria and the planning criteria, which first sentence says project's been thoroughly planned and ready to begin, and then talks about if funding is coming from different sources, how that works, matching funds, and they're interested in the operational costs, and so that's what the legislature is looking at. I don't know that they always follow their own criteria for needs-based, but that is a requirement for us to consider in putting this in, and primarily, what the legislature, and I have answered this question numerous times at the legislature, is this request a priority on your ICIP? And, you know, we work on the ICIP throughout the summer, we adopt it in the early fall, we submit it, and this request is tied to that ICIP. Now, we're going through the 2020 changes as well, and so things are different this year. In past years, we would travel to Santa Fe, find our legislator, have them sign the request, they would typically turn it into legislative services. That's not gonna work this year. It's an electronic submittal. I recently went through training on how the electronic submittal works, but basically it works this way. When we put in that number that corresponds with a priority on the ICIP, a lot of that form will auto-populate with the information that we put in on the ICIP. I don't know how that's gonna work yet, the site is not really functional yet, but upon your consideration of this, I will go to the site and start putting in our requests. Now, I believe what's gonna happen is, also what will be auto-populated is that amount that we put in in the current year, so we may not have a lot of discretion on the amount that we request, maybe what's listed on the ICIP, and generally, we've tried to follow that guidance in the memo here as well. Now, I bring this to the commission for your consideration tonight, it does contain my recommendations, however, it's a decision of the commission, and the commission can have a discussion on that with the criteria that we had just discussed, and while I would start putting this in as soon as I get that direction from the commission, we do have until February 11th to get in our capital outlay. Typically, we would have it in by the time the legislature convened, and I would try to communicate to our representatives in the Senate and the House why this is a priority for us, why this is important, and we try to put in a standalone project. Whatever funding we get here, we can begin and we can end that project or that need without looking for additional funds, without the delay of additional years, without other grant applications. We want this to be standalone, so we've put this together with that basis in mind, and Mayor, I will hold up and answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. I did too sit in on that training you talked about because of senior centers, and they said that there were some places where you could edit and stuff, but we'll see. I know the first day they tried it, they had some issues.
Got some bugs.
Let's see what happens. Are there any questions for Mr. Barry?
This is Commissioner Chavez, I have a question on the ICIP. Page that is for 2022 through 2026, is that correct?
Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioner Chavez, that is correct. Why, why it's 22 through 26, I'm really not clear, but that is what is mandated to us by the local government division. They set that up, but 2022 would reflect the current year, and I think to put something into perspective for you, we've got funding on two of our requests through the 2020 legislature, that's back last February that concluded. We do not have grant agreements on that yet. A lot of that is because of the 2020 effect and budget-related issues, but we are almost a year, well, we're nine or 10 months from that, and we can't start on that project because we do not at this point have grant agreements, so while we put in there 2022, that may not be unrealistic as to when the funds would be available to us.
And that's what I've been told in the past, is that it's 2022 because that is the earliest funds for that funding would be available.
That would be the beginning of the next fiscal year, so if we get funded in this legislative session for 2021, well, yeah, then July 1 would be the beginning of fiscal year 2022.
Correct.
Okay, that covers it then, that answered my question.
Now, Mayor, Commissioner, I'll just kinda go down the list of my recommendations. We try to correspond to the ICIP, and back when we talked about this, I had recommended to you, and I recommend now that we look at purchase of police equipment as our top priority here, and I'll put in the amount of $300,000, and what that would fund is telecommunications and dispatch upgrade. We would propose buying new computers for our dispatch facility, install the new hardware with up-to-date operating systems. We would replace our computer-dated dispatch software, CAD software, that would include records management system. All of that that I mentioned is outdated in our current system, so we would upgrade that. We would look at, and we've talked about this before with a little asterisk by it, we would look at body-worn cameras. The reason that we've talked about that is we also have an option through self-insurers' fund to have them provide body-worn cameras. We have that now, we comply currently, however, it's pretty obsolete systems that were originally provided by self-insurers' fund. They had offered to do that again. That also has some benefit for, from them for a liability standpoint. And then also, we would look at replacement or the addition of non-lethal or less lethal police technology. This would include updated TASER systems and possibly some other systems as well. Then we've listed drainage system improvements, reconstruction. We basically talked about two things there, the subsurface storm drainage system in the original townsite, and then the 1930s big mortars, sandstone channels throughout town. We have a lot of needs there over the years. We're requesting 250,000 from the legislature, Sugarweed Avenue pedestrian and bicycle trail. We had talked about that related to our outdoor recreation partnership with the state. Frontage road at East 10th, we talked about construction and conversion of that frontage road to a commercial route that we could attract commercial business related to the development of that area with the reconstruction of the interchange and potentially the designation of Interstate 27 regarding the Clayton Road. And then we talked about a document storage facility there, you know, and those of you who've been around City Hall much know that we store documents just about in every nook and cranny here. Ultimately, we'd like to scan those and have electronic copy, but right now, it's really, you know, mandated that we would preserve a lot of those documents, so that's a memo for you, and again, I'll hold up there and let the commission discuss.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barry. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Barry, I think I've stated before that I think the priorities look good, they match the ICIP, and I'm very comfortable with the suggestions.
And, Mayor Deckett, I just wanted to just comment on the project I've been working on with Jeff Peterson from Center for Community Innovation, and basically this project of the toy lending library and possibly other types of lending libraries that would be beneficial to the community simply give purpose to some of our building improvements, because then once that plan is formulated, then we could designate one of the city buildings as, that could be used for that, that project. And, you know, I've been talking, I have an ongoing discussion with Mr. Barry on how to do it, and we're hoping to get that, you know, the proposal or the idea put together for everybody to review early in January.
All righty, thank you, Lady.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions?
I think just to expand on that, Commissioner Schuster, we're talking about maybe working with the Center for Community Innovation about getting some more information together for that proposal and bringing it to the commission at the first January meeting, I think is the discussion, correct?
Correct. Sorry, I was muted. That is correct.
All righty. And then we can motion then to approve the priority.
I will move to approve.
I'll second.
That's a good one.
Sure.
We have a motion and numerous seconds to approve the capital outlay funding priorities for the 2021 legislative session. Is there any further discussion? Is anyone opposed? Vote by the sign of eye. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Item F, deliberate enact on resolution 2020-69, fiscal year 21, budget adjustment number four. Michael Ann?
Mayor Commissioner, in your package this evening is a budget adjustment, and I bring this to you since this is the only meeting that will be held in December, and this will be the end of the second quarter, so I do have a few line item adjustments that I'm proposing in various city departments. The Raton Humane Society had initially applied for the CARES Act grant that the city administered recently, and in reviewing that, we did not feel that their request met the criteria. However, the city manager and I have decided to bring an adjustment to the commission where we could, because they are housed in a city facility, the unsheltered, that belongs to the city of Raton, that we could help defer some of the expense that they contribute to actually running that facility, so you will see some adjustments that we've proposed there for veterinary services, dog food, and building maintenance. They do provide a lot of the cleaning supplies and just everything that it takes to operate that facility. Other than that, our previous meeting, we did approve an adjustment for $12,000, and that was the professional services for our economic development partners to assist with administration of the CARES grant funding and to provide those critical business services to the applicants that did receive funding. So Grow Raton has completed the initial round one business entakes, and we did award the final round of funding last week to all of our businesses, and so all of those funds have been distributed, and everybody signed their agreements and received their checks on that, so we'll be working on the reimbursement, and then Grow Raton will start reaching out to those round two businesses to do an assessment on their needs. Other than that, I'm just reclassifying some other expenses, because last year, we only had half a year's worth of the new GRT for the economic development. I didn't adequately budget enough for the GRT admin expense from tax and cubs, so I need to increase that one. Other than that, I think everything else is already settled. Ray, is there any questions?
Any questions for Michael Ann?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020-69, financial, which is just before.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2020-69, fiscal year 21, budget adjustment number four. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposed? Vote by the sign of eye. Motion carries, thank you. Item G, city manager's report. Mr. Barry?
Mayor Commissioner, I have an update for you on the city, annual city audit, submission of the financial report to the state auditor. We have scheduled an exit conference on Friday with our independent auditor. The plan is to submit the audit to the state auditor on Tuesday. The state auditor has put out guidance that only electronic submittal would be accepted. That again is a change from previous years when they required delivery of a certain number of printed copies, but now they are requiring the electronic submittal only, and so we would comply with that, do that that way. As you recall from previous years, the review by the state auditor's office takes a while, so we would expect that will be six or eight weeks until we get something back from them, and then much later, when we report to the full commission and the public, the results of the audit and the financial report. Just a partial project update for the commission and for the public. We would anticipate outages of water service in the Park Avenue area over the next couple of days. One of the remaining things on the Third Street water line project would be a switchover from the old water lines to the new water lines. We would tie in the new sections and then abandon the old sections that we are replacing, and so we'll have periodic outages while that's going on. We'll have a fairly large area of around Park Avenue, probably from Second Street to Fourth and Fifth Street, out of water periodically over the next couple of days. We, myself and the public works director, have been discussing and planning additional phases of our projects regarding the transfer station and the aquatic center. We're currently under construction in phase one on both of those projects, and that's progressing along, and then we've got some additional work that we will follow up with, so we're doing, planning on that, we're working on that. As Michael Ann had reported, our staff is completing the closeout of the CARES Act agreements. She had talked about the small business relief grant, all of those funds are dispersed, and we have some closeout activities with Department of Finance Administration. Same thing on the local government relief agreement. Same thing on the local government relief agreement. We are submitting closeout documentation for them and asking for the reimbursement, and we should complete both of those in advance of the December 30th deadline. Lastly, Mayor and Commissioner, municipal league had conducted their winter conferences last week. It's kind of nice because we attended virtually from here, we saved on the travel, you can attend the conference, and you can do some other work while you're at it, so that's been going on. Also, we've been doing a fair amount of online training, that's a good time of year for that, and that will continue as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barry. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Chatterley? Commissioner Jacomo?
Negative, thank you.
Commissioner Chavez?
Negative.
Mayor Protim?
No, thank you, good meeting.
All righty, thank you all for your support in getting through this virtually, we appreciate it. I have no other further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.